Slide that door shut behind you.
Don't they have to give me the signal?
Slide that door shut for me. Tell me when you're ready to say the pledge.
Well, we had to stand next to Janks's when they have. Righty. Ready there, John Schilling?
Okay, I'd like to call the regular city commission meeting to order of Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And if we could start by joining me with a pledge today of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, united at, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion about board and committee appointments and our current policy for the terms and consecutive appointments.
I'll second that.
Okay, I will place that at 1B on the agenda. Any others? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the regular commission meeting of November first.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve the minutes of our regular meeting of November the first, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Communications. We have one communication. We have any action?
It's good news.
Yes, it is. We do have our county commissioner with us. Commissioner Zach.
First of all, I want to thank all of the residents for re-electing me, and I look forward to serving for another two years. So I want to tell you, we have a holiday, Thanksgiving coming up, and the Saturday after Thanksgiving is now called Small Business Saturday. And Oakland County has created an additional contest besides Federal Express that has some type of, you know, where you can get a gift card by registering. But they're calling it Small Business Saturday in Oakland County. It's a shopper contest. And I'm going to leave this here, residents. You can go to theadvantageoakland.com/shopsmall, and you can enter, find out directions, how you enter yourself in a contest to win some prizes if you shop locally. And it'll give you some different stores that have registered locally. And the prizes, the first prize is five thousand dollars, second prize is two thousand, third is a five hundred dollar voucher for travel on Southwest Airlines. So it's again to get people to shop locally, and it's an additional incentive to do that. So I'm very pleased about that. We finally voted on a PACE program in Oakland County. And PACE is the acronym for the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. And the goal of this program is to promote use of renewable energy systems and improvements in privately owned commercial property. And typically, it costs more money to do some sustainable renovations. And this is a mechanism where you can use different funding resources, recapture the money in a systematic way. In some other cities, townships have done this in Oakland County, created PACE districts. But now all of Oakland County is a PACE district. And we heard from some business owners where they were trying to do something in Ferndale, which has a PACE district, but another community doesn't. So this is just one universal program. If people are interested in using this, you can contact Lean and Green Michigan, can find them easily on the internet. They are the organization that's working with people in Oakland County, as well as most of the locations throughout the state, and they can help guide you through the regulations. I read the piece for our finance committee. It's long and it's cumbersome. I can't tell you that I fully understand it, but I'm glad to know that someone does and can help lead us through it. And I just want to remind residents that there is an open data policy. I did hear from somebody recently that you can go online and get more information for free from Oakland County as part of this newer policy. That's it for this evening. Any questions for me? Yes?
Who pays for PACE?
It's really, it's the business owner. There's no liability to the county or the community.
So all of this is free technical assistance?
No, but it's a finance mechanism, recapturing it. So it's not going to cost tax dollars to any local thing, but it will be, you'll be able to recover the additional cost of the energy improvements through these financing mechanisms.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public participation is next. This is the portion of the agenda when our citizens may present their thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Commission members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of the city staff or department of the city, please print your name and contact information on the sheet provided at the recorder's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. Please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing none, I'm going to close public participation and move on to the first item of the agenda, which is a public hearing. This is a matter of receiving public comment on the proposed use of a nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars that's allocated to the city of Huntington Woods under the Community Development Block Grant Program for two thousand and seventeen. So if there's anyone from the public that has a comment to this, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to our items of business. First one being a matter of authorizing the allocation of the two thousand and seventeen CDVG funding.
Yes. We've been allocated, it has been allocated the nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three. We are limited in what we can use that expenditure, I'm sorry, that revenue for. We can spend thirty percent of it on public service categories and then seventy percent on other categories. So the best use for that thirty percent is to put back into our general fund and offset the cost of wages for the bus drivers for the senior trips and the senior transportation. And then the seventy percent, the six thousand four hundred and sixty-four, would go back to Oakland County for their home improvement program. We had, in the past, occasionally kept the money ourselves, but it was very cumbersome, and it's a very, lot of administrative work for a small amount of money. And so we do send it back to Oakland County. Any of our residents that are eligible for those funds, it is for low income, participants can access money through Oakland County.
Do we have a motion to accept the allocation that's been presented?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion from the public? Any comments or questions from the commission?
So someone would go directly to Oakland County to request help with equipment, removing architectural barriers, minor home repairs, et cetera?
Yes. And our money is just in a pot, so it's not like, the money is set aside and only for Huntington Woods residents. It does go into a pot of money, so all residents of Oakland County have access to it, including Huntington Woods residents.
Okay.
Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the one that we added, which is a conversation regarding board and commission interviews and appointments. And I know Commissioner Al Iverson wanted to start that, but actually, I'm going to start because it gave me an excellent opportunity to bring up something that I wanted to talk to the city commissioner about, as well as make aware to the community, on the senior advisory committee. We have two members of the senior advisory committee whose terms are up at the end of this year. And those two, Catherine Marchionne and Howard Collins, both happen to be two of the three members that have been studying and very active in the senior housing study process that we're going through right now. So I would like to recommend that we hold off on appointing new members to that committee until we finish the study on the housing, senior housing. That way, we keep their experience and their knowledge on board for the next six to eight, nine months, however long it takes us to finish this discussion with the community. And then at that point, they can continue to serve if we don't make appointments. At that point, we can, we can appoint those positions. We can still interview for them at this time if anyone applies to join the senior advisory committee. I think it's just important with everything that's going on that we keep that experience on the board. So that was one thing I just wanted to throw out there and get the commission's approval to do. And then Commissioner Iverson, do you want to take it from there?
Sure. Well, basically, I would just like the commission to consider a slight change to its policy regarding board and commission vacancies and renew, and/or renewals. The current policy does allow residents to serve a consecutive term if they would like, if they still have, you know, if they've only completed one term. They can serve up to two terms, I believe, on most of the boards. While I believe it's important to recognize our appreciation for a volunteer's willingness to serve another term, I do believe that we owe it to all residents and to ourselves to advertise whenever a term is ending. We should use it as an opportunity to solicit applicants in order to ensure we're doing our due diligence. For example, let's look at planning commission. For just, we would advertise that the planning commission has one or two or three, however many terms that are expiring in December, and that each seat would be, or if it were subject to reappointment, but that we would also still be accepting applications and reviewing them. So there are many potential benefits to doing this. It reminds residents that we're always looking for volunteers. We need volunteers. It allows us to uncover potential talent that we might, that might be crucial to a specific board. It gives us an opportunity to review current volunteers to make sure things are going well. It also allows us to create a growing database of residents who are interested in serving our city, so for future or current positions. And it also creates a standard that's consistent across the board. So here's a somewhat hypothetical situation. Let's say our planning commission is in the process of trying to determine the best way to address a critical building issue. And let's say there's a resident in our city who actually has some unique city planning or development skills or experience. With our current policy, we might be missing that opportunity to bring someone on that is new, who might be able to help us with those decisions and innovative solutions. Would also be possible that, you know, that no one will apply for the position. At that point, then we can have the discussion about whether we do another consecutive term, even if it's past the two years. So with that, goodbye.
All right. Do we need, one other thing that came up in this last week was that we were talking about setting a date for interviews. Is that something that we need to set the date and post the date? Do you need a motion for that? Or not necessary?
I don't think you need, we'll just go ahead and post it, of course, with the Open Meetings Act, but I can tell you now and let the public know that December fifth, we're going to be interviewing for residents that are interested in serving on boards and commissions. So as those forms come in, we'll have Joy set up interviews and set aside December fifth. I had indicated to you earlier that we would be receiving the audit at that time, and we won't. We told the auditor that we would, you know, we were meeting December twentieth, so that's the deadline that she is shooting for. So December fifth will be just interviews for boards and committees and commissions, and then December twentieth will be the audit presentation followed by the regular commission meeting. Six p.m. on the fifth.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Roosevelt?
I was just going to say I have no issue with your proposed senior housing.
Senior advisory committee.
Senior advisory committee situation in light of senior housing and the fact that they're in the middle of that project. The ordinance says they serve until they're replaced, and so I think we should advertise, take applicants, interview folks. Once that project concludes, then at the next meeting, we'll place it on the agenda for appointment. But I would not want to, and look, if nobody else expresses an interest and they still want to serve another three-year term, I'm fine with that as well, but I wouldn't want to do a three-year term until we see if there's other interests. I don't, also don't want to remove them as we're in the middle of this project. So I'm fully supportive of that. And, you know, as far as what Commissioner Iverson said, it's fine. I mean, I think we should just advertise that we have openings on boards and commissions and let, let folks apply. I think what we've seen over the years is folks have their favorites, and they tend to check things on applications even if they're not open. So, you know, some folks are doing that now, but, you know, let's, let's let folks know what's out there. And, you know, when we get the information as a commission, as Commissioner Iverson outlined, it can say, you know, that there's one vacancy and two folks up for reappointment consideration, and we can, you know, consider a reappointment or what our other options are, you know, as we've typically done in the past. So I don't have an issue with either one of those things.
I'd like to add, just from a practical point of view, what, what I had done a couple weeks ago in the e-blast is indicate what committees had terms that were expiring that we needed new applicants for, and put it out in the e-blast to people, you know, fill out the fillable form. And we got, probably got, I don't know, seven, eight. And they are not related at all to the vacancies. People are just checking off what they want, not necessarily what, what we have vacancies for. So just for a pragmatic point of view, I think it would be easier going forward to just say, we're taking applications for citizen interest forms. Let us know what you're interested in. If we've got vacancies, fine. If we don't, set them aside, maybe use them sometime in the future. Because really, what I'm putting out there as, as vacancies, nobody's taking that into consideration to putting down what, what their interest is. So I'd rather just be more generic and say, here, just didn't serving on any one of these committees, fill out a form, submit it, and then, then we go from there.
And we typically, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say, the, the, the list of vacancies changes. You know, we came aware of a, of a new vacancy that, you know, wasn't listed in the e-blast, and so it's kind of a fluid list of what's vacant and what's not. So why pin myself into a corner and say, I'm only taking applications for these boards or commissions, we'll just tell us what you're interested in, and we'll just make it a more, a generic request for a citizen interest forms.
And typically, when we're interviewing people too, we, we do ask them if there's other boards and commissions that are interested in. And we do keep their applications on file as well. If, for any reason, they don't get appointed to a board or commission in that given year, they don't have to come back in and interview again. We keep those on file, and we consider them the following year.
Oh, I do, I was just going to add that. I actually, I kind of disagree with that. I think we should, we should specify the actual boards that are up, but we can also, you know, have at the end. But we are also interested in taking any, you know, if you'd like to apply for anything, we welcome that, just because I think there might be someone who's waiting to hear for when the historic district or when the, you know, board of review is up. So that may be what they're waiting to see. And if we just have it generic, they may not, you know, think to send it in. So, I mean, I, I would just have both, perhaps, just so that we're aware of when things are coming up, so people who might be looking for something, don't miss it. Did I not, did that not make sense? Well.
That, in reality, that, that doesn't happen?
Okay.
People just apply for what they're interested in?
Sure. Oh, I see, I understand what you're saying.
So if they're interested in historic district, whether there's an opening or not, they would, they would chuck it off and say, I'm interested in this.
Right. But could we have something that states that there are, you know, there are positions that are opening? Again, we're asking for people to send in their, you know, their interest form or their, fill out their application. I just, I'm not sure, I mean, I understand that some people will just check it off, but they might be looking for that. They might just be looking for when, you know, when does planning commission come? When's the next term going to start with that? So, I don't know. Let me discuss.
Commissioner Jenks?
The committees that we have are advisory. They often bring unbelievable skills, as you've identified. I would like to be able to reappoint those folks, because in the first year, no matter who you are or what your skill set is, it has to fit into what's going on in Huntington Woods. And at the end of that second term, now, we get feedback from staff. So if someone wants to be appointed to a second term, but they haven't really been around for the first term, staff tells us, and they don't get reappointment. When people apply, and I do agree with the idea of continuing the two people that you mentioned, and that's not brand new. In the nineteen nineties, I served on the library board before I was elected here. I also represented all small libraries on the regional library. There was a project, we were rebuilding the library. There were parts of it that were open. There was the elevator being put in when, when that reading room was put in. I asked, could I extend? And the mayor, you know, said it would be logical, at least until that project was done, because I had to advocate in that instance for the library. Normally, when people apply, they don't apply for one thing. They check three or four boxes. The most popular ones are recreation, planning, senior committee. And so you, and Bob is always the person that makes the comment, is there something else that you would also consider? Because those are tight, and it's not just that we have one person with a good skill set. We might have four people with a good skill set and only one slot. I would hope in that, we keep it open, that people can apply. When there's been a vacancy, someone moves out of the city, and we know about it. Very often, one of us can remember someone that was previously interviewed, and we can say, you know, could we perhaps go out and reach out to that person? We are technically, as liaison to those committees, not to take an active role, because they advise us what they want to do, and it would be double dipping, because I didn't get my point of view in the committee. Now it's coming here, and I'm going to try and change your way of thinking. So we're the ones that rotate. Every year, we go on to a new committee, and we come back at the end of five. We see what's going on, we hear what's going on. We also see and learn about the people that participate. But I would hope that we not give the ability to, one, reappoint, and, two, where it's to the value of the city, be able, as the mayor is recommending, that we extend people. We really need the skills and the kinds of skills that come before us are unbelievable. I mean, these are people that are planners in other cities, they run recreation programs, they have remarkable skills. And then there's a parent that says, you know, I have two kids that are using recreation, and I think you're off track, and I'd like to serve to get you back on track. You don't meet the needs of my kids. Or, you know, you're not dealing with the parks in the way we want you to. Someone looked at signage one year and said, your signage is terrible. Another time, they said, even though you don't have staff, you need to take care of those little corner parks. And one woman who was staying home raising her kids, but had these unbelievable skills, documented every pocket park, what the needs were, who was working on that park, and it was all done voluntary and where there needed changes. So I would hope that we keep the system open, we look for experience, we try and involve as many people in this process as possible. I believe in Oak Park, if you get on a committee, you can stay there for the rest of your life. I don't think that's healthy for the city. Here, you get, you know, a maximum of two terms, then you go off for a year, and maybe you can come back. But in the meantime, someone that's sharper than you, has newer ideas or different ideas, comes along, you may not get back on track. That's my point of view. I agree with what you've said. I don't think we should push for one year or single terms only. Not everyone wants to continue, and some people enjoy that they were on committee A, but now want to go on committee B because they either have multiple curiosity or multiple skills. And our, most of our committees are a mixture of people with specialists, and at the same time, people that are generalists. They have a family, they're, they've experienced that program. They may have questions that they want to lay out to the city, and the city has to figure out the answers. Remember me?
You're good?
No, I have a question. Actually, I have a couple of questions. First, what's driving this?
What's driving wanting to extend? Well, actually, David contacted me about this with, I wasn't actually where it was when we first talked about it with the senior housing. And I kind of said it was a good idea, we should go ahead and extend them, but then I started thinking about it, and I thought, well, you know, maybe we, we should still open the interview process to the residents, because I think that's fair. I think we, they're under the assumption that this period ends after two terms, then we need to do that. And then I got an email from David, and we discussed it, and then Amy and I discussed as well. I think that when it comes to appointing people to the boards and commissions, I'm not saying that we shouldn't reappoint people to two terms. I think that that would be foolish. If we have people willing to serve another term, then that is, that's wonderful. But I think that if we don't open it up to the citizens and give them an opportunity to apply, and we don't at least give a cursory look at their application and see if they have some skills that might be beneficial to the boards that they would be serving, I think that that's kind of, I think it's irresponsible. If we have some new people coming in who can lend credibility or insight to something that we might be struggling with, we should be in the position to be open to considering it. I mean, I don't think we're going to have an influx of millions of people banging on the door to serve on all of these boards all of a sudden, but I think that we do have a group in the last round of interviews, quite a good group of people with a wealth of experience and knowledge. And we, I think we owe it to them to at least consider them, even if we even if we are going to reappoint somebody, we need to be, as a commission, looking at it, taking a look at it.
Is the suggestion, because, that's why I said what's driving it, I mean, you brought up the Planning Commission.
Sure.
And I served on the Planning Commission this year, and we have spent dozens of hours on this maximum house-size ordinance, the zoning ordinance, we had lengthy presentations from the city planner, we had lengthy discussions about formulas and considerations and various aspects that go into that, so that's, I was curious if that was singled out, but, you know, because what always concerns me is people who have agendas, not ideas, or they have ideas that are related to agendas, and so that's my, the basis of my first question, you know, what's driving it. My second question is, is it your belief that we should require that those board members who are eligible for reappointment be re-interviewed as though they were new applicants?
No.
Okay. Because what I have to say in response to that is, first of all, there's a big learning curve, see, you had, despite the great success of your first year, haven't sat on the Planning Commission, and the amount of time that that board takes really is taxing, because depending on the number of projects, you have to take the plans, and I'm not an architect, so obviously I have to do my best to read them or look at them, what I always try to do is go to each of the sites to see what the site is, to see the other houses around it, and without appearing to be some kind of a stalker trying to walk around the house to see what they have going. Now, I served on the Planning Commission for six years, and when my term was up on that in 1994, or whenever, no, excuse me, 2004, I applied to be on ZBA, and, you know, I came in to interview for that, because it's a new board. Originally, I applied to be on the ZBA when I first began my involvement with the city, which was in 98, I applied to be on ZBA and received an appointment to the Planning Commission, so, which was fine, but it is, there is an enormous learning curve to this, it isn't like, "I know the idea, I got it, I know, I know what's right," it's not how it works, okay? And I can understand, and anyone in this city is free to come in and talk to the Planning Commission, I continue to be more impressed by Mr. Dr. Offill on a monthly basis, by the way he allows and, you know, encourages citizen participation and ideas, and that is a very, that is a very high-functioning, well-functioning group of people who, there's a lot of give and take. There's also a big learning curve, and there's a big learning curve about all of the aspects of construction, zoning, there's a big, ZBA candidly is much easier, because the ordinance is clear, you have very clear things, planning is wide variation, there's a lot of room for subjectivity, so, you know, as you correctly know, there are some big-ticket items out there that have to be dealt with, and one of the benefits that you get after sitting for a year or two years on the board, or three years, is you get the idea of what's successful and what's not, and so, the, you know, serving on the board and input to the board are not mutually exclusive, that any person can come in and say, "Look, I'm an architect, this is what I think," or, "I'm, you know, whatever, I can, I have ideas." So, it's not, it's open to ideas, not closed to ideas, but, as Commissioner Jenks noted, as a liaison, our job, it's hard for me to just sit back, but, and even though you can't vote, I'm more interested in what the others have to say before I do it, and I'm just telling you, this year, the amount of time, we had one meeting recently, Hank assured he would be over within an hour, and four hours later, we were still there, because what seemed to have been a consensus issue at previous meetings suddenly became a source of, it seemed like we were back to discussion, you know, 101 on the topic, which, you know, can happen, but on the issue of interviews for boards and commissions, as long as you're not suggesting that we decide that if I were on the Planning Commission and the commission decided they wanted re-plant, what, reappoint me again, that I have to come and be re-interviewed?
Yeah.
Because I'm gonna tell you why, every meeting is an interview, all right? Every meeting is open to the public, every meeting is an interview, and I can tell you, the interview is a lot more meaningful in the meeting than it is with, you know, the 15-minute chit-chat with the city commission with, "Why do you want to serve?" and, "Thank you very much," and so forth. Watching how somebody functions, watching whether they're prepared, watching whether or not, you know, the questions they ask tells you that, you know, boy, they're giving us a lot of thought, and so, you know, I'm just, you know, it seems to me like a solution in search of a problem. I've not seen any problem associated with this, but as long as the idea is that if somebody's serving and they're eligible for reappointment, we don't say to them, "You need to come in and re-interview or explain yourself," fine, but I don't, you know, like I said, it appears to me, there's, oh, I'm always interested in what's, like I said at the beginning, what's driving this, and I don't see any basis for concern here, I mean, the city is an open book, and like I said, as far as the senior advisory, the mayor, I believe, is 100% correct, Howard Collins, these people have worked extremely hard on this, and it's deleterious to good government to say, "Oh, you're out, now we're gonna start from ground zero again, oh, you're out, thanks a lot for all the work you did, now get out of here so we can put in two people who aren't familiar with it, it's gonna take them another year, we're never gonna get anywhere," and if that's someone's idea of progress, it's an incorrect statement. So, I'm all in favor of what the mayor is suggesting on the senior advisory, and I think I made my points clear, I'm not going to vote for anything that requires people who are eligible for reappointment to be, demand that they come in and be re-interviewed as far as taking applications and things like that, that's always been what we've done here, that's not a new idea, I mean, that's how we function with this stuff, and I'm certainly not against that, and it's always good to have, we see it all the time, few names in reserve, people who'd be good, if somebody says, "I can't serve anymore," or whatever, you've got somebody there, but there is no, like I said, you focused on the Planning Commission, and as somebody who has really spent a lot of time this year on that, I don't see the problem, so, I think I've exhausted that topic, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. So what is the pleasure of the commission as it relates to, excuse me, advertising for board and commission appointments or interviews? Do we advertise in general, or do we list the boards and commissions that have openings and reappointments? I think that was the question that Commissioner Allison Iverson was brought forward, so.
I think, one, you have to fill the boards and commissions that have vacancies, and there are, historically, there have been some boards that we couldn't fill, everyone said, "No, it's boring," or whatever. No one has ever been stopped, the first way, the first thing we do when we start an interview is tell us a little bit about yourself, and in that process, people tell you what they're interested in, what their skill sets are, regardless of what's available. When they normally check a form again, they're checking two, three, four boxes. So, we are interviewing, you know, I mean, we may narrow it down, a lot of times, they won't say, "I want this other thing," what they'll say is, you know, "I'm interested in that," and then staff will follow up with it. When we go to bringing on people with high turnover, term limits, the people that end up running those programs are staff, not the elected officials, because the only people that understand it are the staff in most instances. So, I would like to support the idea of continuing the practices that we've been doing.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm just wondering if maybe what we do is, when we put out the advertisement, we list all the committees that exist in the city, and say, you know, find below a list of committees that are available in Huntington Woods, along with current, because as the city manager's correctly indicated, they are fluid, it goes out one day, someone resigns next week with a list of current vacancies, and so I would say, "BART board, three vacancies, one potential reappointment," so that the citizens see that there's three vacancies, but one person has the potential for reappointment, so, provided there's no issue with that particular individual service, there's really two openings, if you will, where there's no reappointment. And we just, I mean, if that satisfies that particular concern that you have, I don't have an issue with it, if the city manager's okay with, you know, putting that out and just listing that it's current, because as you've said, it changes.
Let me see if I understand it, let's say, if there was one term on BART that was expiring this year, and they were interested in serving a second term, it would go out as one vacancy, but probably gonna be reappointed?
Exactly.
Put up that one?
Exactly.
All right. I mean, I have a problem with that, but I could tell you, nobody reads it.
Well, I'm very, I'm very.
They wanna be on BART, they're gonna check off.
But the information is there, you know?
Right, right.
Well, some things we can't, we can't correct, but, you know, I think maybe the, maybe the term would be likely reappointment.
Right, yeah, potential reappointment, likely reappointment, right. However you wanna word it.
And then that's just gonna bring the question, well, what does that mean? So, you know, but there's nothing wrong with Commissioner Iverson's statement about, you know, getting, I mean, getting new blood is fine, but, like I said, you cannot deny the learning curve component, and planning and ZBA carry consequences for residents when residents come in and they've got a big project, there's consequence to that, and if you deny their application, there's consequence to that. So, you know, what I've watched over the years, I've been, I think it's eight years that I've served on planning, and one, six as a member and two as a liaison, and it's a very careful effort to balance and the negotiation that goes on, if there's more windows and things like that, I think it's really led to a great thing for the city in terms of the quality of the homes and so forth, and that goes all the way back to when I started with, when Hank Berry was the chair of the Planning Commission, George Erdstein, all of the, Mr. Ostrowski, all of the people that served, so, it's just like, and it's like I said, though, every meeting is an interview, so if you see you have a person who, you wonder what their agenda is, something to think about.
How about this, like, let's take BART, I'll just use that, I would say, let's say there's one vacancy and one possible reappointment, so I would say, one term expiring 2016, one term expiring 2016, subject to reappointment.
You got it, that sounds fine.
All right.
So we'll lead with a request that we need volunteers to serve city on board and commissions?
Yeah.
And after that, we're gonna list.
These are the areas where we have our needs, and I think it's a conversation that's okay to have, I mean, if we get someone who has an application that is remarkable, or, I mean, I really think Andrew Danaher really stood out to me during the interview process, and there was no place for him, there was no room for him, that it's a conversation when we're going back into our meetings and we have these vacancies to, you know, reevaluate, you know, the talent that we have, to see if there's a place that they could be, that could be a good fit, even if it is, you know, if it is an existing position, but, you know, someone is questionable in their behavior, you know, how they're handling themselves or something, that we could have that discussion, I think it's just, that's really what I'm hoping for.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree, and I would say that, you know, as Commissioner Oldsmann has pointed out, you know, every meeting that these folks participate in is an interview, and that if we have, you know, members who are serving, who are disrespecting residents or not attending meetings or being disruptive, you know, at meetings, then when we go through the next round of interview processes, we can discuss that and discuss not reappointing that individual and selecting someone else, and so that's always an opportunity that we have, and certainly we'll be mindful of that, you know, going forward. I don't wanna get into a scenario where we're comparing someone who we've invested training and resources in to someone else, if they're doing a fine job and they're trying hard, I would evaluate that incumbent on their merits based on their performance. I served on the Planning Commission, I echo what Commissioner Oldsmann says, I served on the zoning board, I would also argue that the Board of Review is another board where there's a lot of training and a lot of understanding of the General Property Tax Act, and a lot of understanding of property values, that I wouldn't want to invest in someone for two years, give them one year of service with that knowledge, and then dismiss them, if they're attending meetings and they're representing the city in a positive manner and treating residents with respect, I wouldn't wanna yank the carpet out from under them, so to speak, and remove them, so, but, if that, if none of those things I outlined were the case, and that they weren't doing those things, then I wouldn't hesitate, because we have a job here to make sure that our citizen volunteers represent the city commission in a positive manner and treat our residents with respect and take their job seriously, and I think generally, that's happening, and so, but we'll evaluate it when we do interviews every year, so, you know, I'm fine with this change in policy and have no issue with it.
That no one will worry.
Okay, we have consensus here? I don't think we need a motion of any sort for that.
I got it.
You have your marching orders?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Public participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the commission, David Sloan, 850 Lincoln, Huntington Woods. I had only brought this up because I was looking for the minutes over the last couple of years and found a few errors in when terms were up, and I brought that up to the city manager, and she's checked into this. My only point that I was asking about is that you just showed that it's available for application. Whoever is to serve on these commissions, committees, that's your decision, based on your interviews or whatever you want, it's just a matter of having that open and available and with a lot of advertisement. City of Berkeley, I talked to some people there on committees there, City of Berkeley lists all members that are up available, like Mr. Rose, who's up, as indicated, so they indicate who's up for possible renewal and what positions are vacant, so, that's all that I think it's important. I hear staff saying, "Oh, I wish we had more people involved, we need more citizens involved," and that is true, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm the only one here tonight, but we need, we need more involvement, I'd like to see more people come to Planning Commission meetings, I've missed two in the last two years, I think they are so educational, and the members of that committee are stellar, they are fantastic, but we still need to have things open, I'd like to see, just see a lot more advertisement, a lot more out there, so people know more about that, even if you felt you needed to delay interviews, I mean, I know you set the times and whatever you said, you've said, but I'd like to, I think we need more public participation, a lot more people I know want to. a lot more people I know want to be involved. And instead of having a little chessboard where people move from one committee to another, we need to just, I would suggest to you that you consider bringing in more people and talk to, talk to more, spread the wings of the commission. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, moving on to reports and minutes. Any motion to approve and file? Any questions or comments? Any, not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, reports and minutes are accepted. Item number three is warrant number 318. Do I have a motion to approve subject to full audit?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. City managers.
Just two things. One, traditionally, leaf pickup ends Thanksgiving week, but given the temperatures and the leaves not falling as soon as they usually do, we're going to be extending leaf vacuuming service to the following week. So you could get your leaves out into the road, hopefully over Thanksgiving weekend. We will extend it to December 2nd. We get kind of a, a time bind, because the same trucks that we use to vacuum the leaves plow the snow.
That's all good, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah. So we can't extend it indefinitely because.
Till February.
They do need to be turned over and ready for winter, but that is being extended another week because of our warm fall. And then in recreation, the winter newsletter is available online, they're going out in the mail the week of November 28th, but it, because it is available online, and you can also pick up a copy at the front desk of the rec center, registration is currently underway. So if you want to get a jump on registry, go online, www.hwmi.org, or stop by the recreation center and pick up a hard copy right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the city manager? It's being done, we're going to move on to commissioners' remarks, and I was remiss in not mentioning at the beginning of the meeting that we may look a little different on camera than we did at the last meeting. We've done our annual shift, we've all rotated, one, the commissioners have rotated one chair, and we have a new mayor pro temp. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Temp Oldsmann. We'll start with your comments.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenks?
I want to thank Joe Rosell, and I want to thank Joy for a smooth city count and a quick count at the city. I had the responsibility of compiling data on election and election changes, so I had to look at Macomb, Oakland, and Wayne, and it was delightful to see the smoothness from our city and very disappointing, pointing for Wayne County and the slowness. I don't know if they finished yet. Today I was at a meeting with the Metropolitan Affairs Coalition, and the Washington lobbyist pointed out for us that infrastructure, 10 years, $1 trillion, that is a major interest area of the president-elect. There was a feeling that that would come before us very, very quickly, although there was no definition as to what that means, with the exception that the president-elect does not like bonding. I would like to see us move quickly to identify all the roads and their condition, get that mapped, get some priority. Historically, we've had a problem in that the contractor can only do so much in one year, and I would like to see us have it set in such a way that we can use two or three contractors based upon whatever the bonding limit is that we have available. What I'm most concerned about is that if there are some ways that we can capture funds differently than what we're doing, that we take advantage of that right in the beginning. The third thing I would ask the city to monitor is during the lame duck session, it's expected that pensions at the local level will be brought up. No one really had a clear definition of what that means, but we had the Dykema representative from Semcig talking about Lansing, and if they come up with these 20% or whatever, we get back into a problem. The, the legislature is expected to come back for roughly two weeks after Thanksgiving. I would ask that you monitor the Michigan Municipal League to see if they're aware of any of this, and that we alert Robert and Vincent, and that we express our opinions quickly in case some of that comes up. Our salaries are not the same as in the private sector, they're lower. Our pensions very often have been higher. I don't think we, I think we should retain control of how we handle pensions and benefits, and I've been very, very pleased that's one of the skill sets that the city manager brings to us. So I would ask, watch lame duck, see if we can get infrastructure. I would hope that maybe we get a consultant to work with us to lay out an infrastructure plan, and I'm, I'm thinking of a road as well as water and sewer. I just don't want us to get caught behind. They come up with these crazy programs where you have 15 minutes almost to get your application. Happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy the holiday, but also be safe. Remember, public safety has armbands that they will give you. If you're going to ride out in the street, make sure you have lights. If you're going to run in the street, make sure you do it on the left side, but preferably run on the sidewalk so nobody gets killed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have no complaints.
Commissioner Rosell?
Mr. Mayor, I just thank our city clerk, Joy, and all of the election inspectors who spent a very long day on election day, and once again, very proud of our city for leading the county in very high voter turnout, very high our participation, regardless of how folks felt about the outcome. I think the important thing is that we continue to show the county that folks in this community care and that folks in this community get out and vote, and so certainly was very pleased to see that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Do we know what our turnout was, what the percentage was?
65%?
Eighty-eight.
I thought it was eighty-seven. Yeah, eighty-eight.
Eighty-four, so including absentee ballots.
How did we do statewide? Were we tapped like normal?
That I don't know.
I would just like to add a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. If you're traveling, please drive carefully, and thank you for the commission for consideration on the senior advisory committee. I think that's important, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting, and I encourage everybody to stop in the rec center or the library or city hall or apply online for boards and commissions, and hopefully we'll see you on our interview date on December 2nd?
Fifth.
December 5th. Thank you.